Let me hear you like two guys! All my pants are up there and you're ready to get me playing this party! Hands up, hands up, hands up, hands up! To the left, to the right, to the left, to the right! Left, right, left, right, hand go! Don't relax! Let's go! Yes sir! You're about to find out excellent news! Great property! Right here, here we go, turn it up! Yes sir! Welcome to the main event town hall meeting!
Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome General Manager of Six Flags America in Hurricane Harbor, Maryland, Ramar Vaughn.
Hey, how's it going tonight? We don't know what that was, right? Alright, alright, so I'd like to welcome all of you to our first day of our 25th anniversary celebration here at Six Flags America. So, let's pipe that up for that guy. It's a pleasure to see all of you. I see you man, you know, looking for Sam. I know I saw Sam a little bit earlier. It's a pleasure to have all of you with us tonight as we talk through some of the important things that we had for Six Flags America in 2024. Um, you know, ultimately 2023 was a very, very special year for me here at Six Flags America. I started here in 1997, almost 28 years ago. Um, and aside from the beverage, I never ever imagined that I'd have a dream come true like this and being an opportunity where I started as a general manager and have the pleasure of really shaping this property and then really putting in a lot of investments, a multi-year, multi-faceted investments to help improve not only this property, but the guest experience and experience for all of you. So I'm very excited about that. So in 2023, you know, we looked at what our team was able to accomplish and for me, not only am I proud of the team, but I'm proud of the way that we deliver on everything, um, you know, as it pertains to the look, the feel of not only what we accomplished last year, but ultimately what we delivered for all of you. It was a very, very ambitious plan. Um, you know, one of the first things that we started with, you know, we looked at our marquee and it only took a while to get that going, but we were able to deliver on modernizing the existing marquee that we had at the front of the park and then also modernizing the secondary marquee that we had with paint, revitalizing the signs there. Uh, and then ultimately at the end of the, at the end of the night, you guys probably see how beautiful that that main marquee is. Um, for 2024, as we think about what we are looking to accomplish, um, it's probably the largest investment that we've had since 2001. Um, you know, we'll talk a little bit more about that, but like I said, 2023 was not only a phenomenal year for us investment wise, but we continue to deliver. Comfort was one of the key areas that we also focused on. Um, we added benches, we added shade structures, we added opportunities for our guests to not only relax, but just have a better experience overall. We added and improved our app. Our app had advanced weight finding, uh, removed us more into the digital age with some of the improvements that we delivered there as well. Our entry experience, I'm sure all of you have seen speedy parking and the way that that's structured. Uh, that's something that we started in 2023 and will continue obviously through 2024. Um, and that is helping to enhance, not only enhance your experience, but it helps to speed up the processes everywhere as well. We also added priority lanes in our, in our property for 23 and it knows to continue with the 2024, so that's very exciting as well. Landscaping wise, I'm sure all of you saw the improved landscaping that we had. How many of you guys saw that last year? We added a ton of flowers, beautiful, beautiful landscapes throughout. We added fencing, I don't know if you guys took a look at that. We had beautiful rocks, stone formations and things like that throughout the property. Um, and different planters as well. And so those were things that we wanted to do to enhance, not only and beautify uh, the property that we're here. And then building up things, um, it's been a lot of time. The lower restrooms over here, uh, the lower Main Street restrooms over here, we took a lot of time there. Um, we put new flooring down, we lit it up like a, you know, like a store. Uh, we put new lighting in, um, we redid the walls and we took the entire facade, repainted it, uh, and really just improved it and modernized the, the overall look. Uh, we matched Heritage House's exterior with that as well. Uh, took some time to paint that and fix some of the exterior, um, at Heritage House. And then from a Johnny Rocket's perspective, we revitalized that location by ripping out the old floor, putting in new tile and it really helped to improve the look inside there. So those are some of the building modifications that we made in 23. Um, yeah, the Looney Tunes Fountain, guys. The Looney Tunes Fountain was on the struggle bus for a little bit and uh, we were able to get that back going for our little guests and we were very excited about that thanks to our maintenance team. And then uh, the return of our entertainment. Um, we really brought our entertainment team back uh, into the fold heavy in 23 and it continues in 24. I'm sure you guys saw Rhythmics and you saw that beautiful intro that I just had and so I'm very excited about what they were able to accomplish. Well, they had a ton of new shows, a ton of new interactive things from Rhythmics to Camp Groove, to Block Parties, all the investments that we put into the entertainment team are very excited about. So uh, definitely something that, you know, I think we wrote home uh, a very great, great opportunity for our guests to have with entertainment. As we move into Hurricane Harbor, what did you guys think of Hurricane Harbor, Maryland this year? It was okay, it was okay, okay. I thought it was great. Um, we, we added a brand new entry portal uh, as you come into, to Hurricane Harbor, Maryland. We added a beautiful new sign. Uh, we spent a lot of time really trying to figure out a way to improve every single attraction. Um, we, if you take a look at that sign right there, that's showing right here on the screen, uh, we added shades, uh, shade structure sales throughout the park. Uh, we improved some of the midways by adding concrete, replaces some of the old uh, midway that we had down there. Uh, we added some new chairs on our activity pool deck. Uh, we enhanced the cabana area. Uh, we continued to add some more tropical plants and flowers in, in the Hurricane Harbor, Maryland. Uh, not only did we rebrand that, but uh, we also delivered on a lot of world-class shows in that area as well. We brought Harbor Nights, Viva La Fiesta, so there was a lot going on in the harbor and we were very, very excited about that. I'm glad that you liked it. So 2023 brought a huge change for us for the last part of the season and that was Fight Fest uh, and Boo Fest. So we, we took a different approach to that. Uh, in 23, um, we decided to split the park, uh, split the property so that our families could come and stay in the, at the park for much longer. So we decided to take the right side of the park and we made that a Boo Fest area so all the families could come and stay and then they could avoid this, this scariness on the other side. And then we allowed the left side focus on Fight Fest. We delivered new shows, new scare zones, uh, and then newer art attractions. So we had a rap, uh, we had Sancho Hayes' house, we had Grave, and we had the Circus Street. So those are the things that we added, uh, and so we were very excited about Fight Fest and what, um, you know, what it delivered for us overall. And so from fireworks to Fight Fest, we accomplished a whole lot in 2023. Uh, it was my first year, obviously we just talked about that, but our team is more excited uh, than ever to tell you a little bit about 2024. But the one thing and the last thing that I wanted to mention about 2023 is, um, we didn't make it on, on Rip Curl, guys. We put a lot of effort into it, we took a risk to try to get that going. Uh, we weren't able to do so. Um, but that ride is ready to go and it will be available to each and every single one of you. Um, you know, when the water park opens uh, on, on the May 25th. But in addition, it's gonna be a private viewing for season pass holders of the past three weekend on May 18th and May 19th. So that's gonna be great for all of you who come and join us uh, for that private opening. More details to, to come on that, but we're very, very excited about that. Um, we think that that's gonna be a great, great thing for us all. And then as we move into 2024, I know we talked about 2024 and our investment, um, we're gonna talk a lot about our significant part of our investment for 24, but these are some of the other things that we are going to deliver uh, in 24. So the big thing, you know, ride reliability is extremely important. As you all know, we want to have our rides available as often as possible. We want them to be available all day, of course, you know, sometimes there's things that happen. Uh, but we looked at some of the rides that we had challenges with last year and we looked for ways to improve not only the reliability, but also to just show them up uh, and put them in a, in a better situation from a speed perspective, different things like that. So Roar and Wild One, we spent a ton of time, uh, work doing track work, track improvements and things like that to help improve it. Marquis and his team worked very diligently on that. Um, we also spent some time, you know, revamping Pirate's Flight. You guys might not be able to see what we've done, but we really, you know, enhanced that ride as well. We redid the carousel top to help improve the performance there. Um, and then for Joker's Jinx, we spent a lot of time really evaluating our limbs, which is our limbs, which is a part of our launch system, um, and helped to improve those as well so that that, that roller coaster is much more reliable. The last thing I would like to mention, which is a big thing for us, is the addition of our Gotham City funnel cake uh, kiosk. So that's coming um, sometime this, this, this summer. Um, we think that this is gonna be a huge addition to the park because it's going to allow uh, a speed or service improvement, not only in uh, one of our significantly, um, you know, uh, attended areas, but it also allows us to separate the funnel cake business from the main snack business and it allows also that additional window to now become a meal, uh, you know, delivery point for our guests. So I think that this is going to be a tremendous addition and we're very, very excited about it. Alright, so without further ado, I'd like to allow the announcer to bring up our next one.
Please welcome Marketing and Entertainment Manager, Joe Hullett.
Thank you. Thank you everybody for sticking with us today. I know it's been a little bit dreary out there, but um, you know, we have plenty of sunny days ahead of us. Um, can we get another round of applause for Ramar Vaughn, our General Manager? There's a hundred percent nobody who has more heart for this property than Ramar and speaking of that and our team, it's a pleasure working with them. Um, so today, my job is to talk about our 2024 show lineup and our 2024 events. So let's get right into it. So I hope you all enjoyed Rhythmics and Slap today at the park that'll be running all summer long. Rhythmics is really telling a story of cultures through music and how music unites us no matter what language or culture you're from. So this year we have more performers, we have more lights, more effects, and of course, more countries than, than ever before. And so the team really updated and uh, we're really excited to show this off. So if you haven't seen it, make sure you come back uh, and, and see it before the end of the summer. Uh, we also have Camp Groove returning to Looney Tunes Movie Town. Very highly interactive show. All your family can enjoy that show together and participate and make sure you get your badge uh, from a camp counselor before you leave. And then we have started Block Party for our 25th anniversary celebration. It's got a limited run here for the next couple of weeks and then it'll join us the rest of the summer right here on Main Street 1776. Once again, a very interactive show, lots of fun, lots of energy uh, for the whole family. And speaking of our 25th anniversary, uh, we are celebrating now through May 19th, these next couple of weekends. If you didn't get your pass holder giveaway, make sure you stop in Flags on your way out, but each weekend we'll have a different giveaway, so make sure you stop by and get that. We also have the scavenger hunt each morning. We have our Heritage Wall exhibit in the Heritage House, which you should stop by on your way out if you haven't already, um, and a whole bunch more. Um, right, moving right along, for Memorial Day weekend, we have Viva La Fiesta returning to Hurricane Harbor, Maryland. It's gonna be longer than ever before with six weekends of live entertainment and lots of Latin vibes and a whole new menu out there in the harbor. A new event that we're doing this year is a Juneteenth commemoration. Uh, this is really a community event. Uh, we'll be looking for live and local entertainment, local street vendors to participate here in the park and the whole evening will be capped off with its own fireworks display. Moving into Fourth of July, we'll be having fireworks on the Fourth, Fifth and Sixth. And honestly, if I'm being real, it's the biggest show we've ever done. So you definitely don't want to miss this year's show, it's going to be spectacular. This summer, we're bringing back Harbor Nights to Hurricane Harbor. It is a really cool, unique experience that you can't find anywhere else. We pull in the Caribbean vibes with a Glow Festival, live entertainment and a bunch of other activities that you'll get no other time here at the park. And plus you'll get slides after dark, which is super cool. So join us Fridays and Saturdays, July and select August weekends. Coming into the fall, Kids Boo Fest will return. As Ramar said, we'll still have our kind of bright side of the park dedicated to our families for that fall fun. Uh, we have a new show already in the works for it, uh, plus a bunch of other activities. So it'll be a great place for families to get out and enjoy some fall weather. And then Fight Fest is back and better than ever with five haunted houses, five scare zones and five shows. We have lots of tricks and excitement to, to share as we get closer. Um, but it's definitely going to be one of the best Fight Fests in recent past. As we uh, talked about earlier, our, we're really excited about our Rip Curl Blaster um, preview on May 18th and 19th. Coming soon, we'll be announcing details for our Steam Town preview. We're also gonna be doing some summer night bonus pass holder ride time and we're gonna be introducing a Fight Fest preview, but you'll have to wait for those details. They're coming up in just a couple of months. Are you excited about 2024, Ramar?
I am excited. I hope all of you are very excited about 2024. Um, before we start talking about Steam Town, I have a lot of people to thank. So let me get my list out here.
Probably wise, you don't want to forget anybody.
Matt Lehman, Jorge Sanchez, Mark Proctor, Joe Hullett, Elliot Russell. This one.
Yeah!
There he is. One more time! Excellent, excellent, excellent. I do not believe we have all met, looking around. My name is Professor Artemis Screammore, the sole proprietor of Screammore Ingenious Invention Industries Incorporated. That's a little wordy. Working on the name, nevertheless, it's not like a lord to come empty handed. I have brought along some of my greatest inventions, ideas, innovations and creations to share with each and every last one of you. I've traveled the world, I've seen things unlike anyone else and I just so happen to be a three-time recipient of the Ebenezer Cogsworth Award. Nobody knows what that is, do you?
No.
Uh, that's unfortunate. Nevertheless, that is not the point. The point is, Mr. Ramar, you don't have anyone to thank but me. Even you put that shabby old mining town up for sale. I thought this would be the perfect way to display my greatest work of all time. Now, what I need from you, Mr. Ramar, are some brave subject guests to test out my latest inventions. Would you happen to have any of those lying around?
I have a lot of beautiful friends out here that are ready for you.
Oh, you mean them, the ones that are still quiet?
Yeah, they're a little quiet, they're a little...
The ones that simply are not loud enough? The ones that could get a little louder? I suppose they'll have to do. Now that I know you have that all covered, I'm going back to the laboratory. I have much to do, I'll see you all in June.
Well, he is uh, quite the character.
Yes, he absolutely is. He's also a very interesting business partner.
I know. So um, do you, do you think we should tell him now?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, what do you think?
No, like maybe it's all like some of the coolest stuff we've ever done.
Well, that's probably very good.
My new racer called me cold.
Brad.
In the heart of Steam Town, visitors can experience the very invention that catapulted me to fame. Steamwurler stands as a testament to innovative spirit, offering a thrilling lift and a sense of excitement that will captivate generations of riders. Steamwurler's raw intermeshing art, its carrying upright gauntlets, spin in a knotty dance, catching air as riders soar over its seat. The ride's intricate design, featuring synchronized arms governed by a redundant central gearing system. It mesmerizes old bookers, but also earns you the perfect show. Marking its place as a masterpiece in steampunk history.
Alright, so how exciting is that, guys? So, Steamwurler is an incredible addition to our property. We're very, very excited about it. We think that Steamwurler is not only going to be fun for those that are riding it, but it'll also be an incredible thing for those who are actually watching all the folks riding this ride. It's located in the heart of Steam Town and it will truly deliver an amazing experience with all the lighting, the steampunk oriented design. I think it's going to be a beautiful, beautiful ride. Um, ultimately, the ride has arrived. Uh, over the past week, we're very excited about it. Site construction has already begun. Uh, and we expect it to start to go vertical in the next few weeks. So more details to come on that. Next attraction.
Believe it or not, this place was an old Spanish cantina when I found it. I immediately thought this would be the perfect space to experiment with electricity. Electrodermy will allow drivers to navigate remains of other electrifying objects and other challenges to move. Spots will fly as each driver battles opposition in a painful supremacy. Consider electrodermy as a symbol of ambition for a rider who will electrify.
Well, we're very excited about this attraction as well. So we've actually worked to enclose this actual attraction. So that's very exciting. It's going to create an amazing immersive experience day and night. Uh, as you can see, there'll be a lot of steampunk elements to really fit in with the thematic portion of Steam Town. Uh, and you know, there will be a beautiful mural on the back wall, as you can see up here on the left-hand side, uh, that will help to deliver the ideal uh, mark for the power plant theme that is designed around electrodermy.
Embark on a wild expedition down the Quantum Canyon River. A waterway entwined with the unpredictable threads of time. My ambitious foray into some bold experimentation has turned this once tranquil showcase into a thrilling rapids ride with the boundaries of eras blown. Offering riders a chance to experience the exhilarating fusion of water-based time travel and the awe-inspiring presence of extraordinary creatures. Each twist and turn of the river reveals a snapshot of Earth's ancient past, creating a unique adventure where the forces of nature and the mysteries of time converge in Quantum Canyon Rapids.
Alright, so I guess... You guys, I, I know some of you think you saw it coming, but how many of you thought you, you really knew it was coming? Huh? Yeah, just a few? Alright, well, cool. So obviously Professor Screammore is gonna take us back in time with this particular ride. Um, we're very excited about this. It will continue to be revitalized, but the addition of the dinos is an incredible thing for us. So they have actually arrived, we have them stored in our paddock here. Never thought that we'd be utilizing the elephant barns again. But as you're riding this ride, you're not guaranteed to actually see the dinos. However, make sure that you're not chilling, hanging around and relaxing, because you know what? It might come at each other.
In an era where airships and zebras rule the skies, I dare to dream of fight beyond imagination. I dedicated myself to creating the most innovative flying machine known to man. Throughout years of testing and uh, impactful landings, my erudital astonishment prospers. I give to you brave pilot, the Skywinder. Running to the bi-gravity and propellant passengers to dizzying heights, able to maneuver through elements like never before and reaching speeds that other inventors will never be able to duplicate. I give to you my grandest creation yet. Professor Screammore, Skywinder.
That's awesome.
Who's excited for Skywander?
Interfering inside of Professor Screammore's grandest creation. Um, so a lot is going into this ride, as you all probably know, a lot of you know that. Um, new trains, new paint, a re-profiled track done by digital imaging by Macoma. The trains are actually on the way. Uh, we hope to have them next week or the week after. Um, and then beyond that, you know, the station is being, you know, re-themed, reimagined. You can kind of see some of the, um, you know, the mockups here. So it'll be an enjoyable experience for all of you. Uh, and I can't wait to, to get on the ride and, and see how amazing it is. It's important to be very smooth, uh, and we're very excited about it, so. So I, I talked to you all about, um, you know, we started here years and years ago. We'll just say it was, you know, a few years ago, not, not almost thirty. Um, I started in this particular location, it was actually called the Crazy Horse Saloon as you all know it, but we've now changed the name to Philamens Steam Pub. Uh, so the Food and Beverage team will focus on delivering uh, some new food experiences for that location, which you'll find out in the coming weeks. Uh, but this particular location, um, is experiencing uh, a lot of, of, of change. The exterior is getting an upgrade, the facade, uh, is getting a paint job. We're adding some different elements to match with the Steam Town concept. Uh, and then as you continue to go inside, we'll have new furniture, uh, new decor, new lighting, et cetera. So it's really gonna be a turnover of a, of, of, of a restaurant and I think that we're very excited about how that's gonna look for all of you and I can't wait for all of you to see it. As we move along to the retail side, very exciting here as well. Clockwork Confection Co., that's going to house all of our candy elements uh, down here in Steam Town. So um, it's going to be a beautiful facility. We have, once again, the facade of this facility is, is being redone and then the interior is being upgraded as well. Uh, new lighting, new flooring, uh, and very similarly, next door is looking Glass Creations. The very same thing is happening, the exterior is being upgraded as well as the flooring. And then you'll see that this is going to be our year-round Fight Fest store and then there will be specialty steampunk themed retail items as well for sale. So uh, great thing on the retail side for Steam Town, I hope so. And then we talked a little bit about entertainment and how our entertainment team continues to bring it. Uh, and they are bringing the stunt show back uh, in the form of Steam Heist. So we're very excited about Steam Heist, it's going to be a new themed show. Uh, it's going to be Professor Screammore's debut and this show will be about him and his origins. and this show will be about him and his origins. Is there anything else that you want to talk to on that, Joe?
I don't want to spoil anything, but something is probably gonna go wrong and then chaos will ensue and then hopefully everything will be okay. So we're very excited to bring back the stunt show coming on May 25th, very soon, very, very soon. Throughout Steam Town, there's gonna be a ton of detail added, starting right at the beginning with our Steam Town portal. So this is gonna be over 14 feet tall. It's gonna have working elements on it as well. Right in front of Steam Whirler is going to be a tractor similar to one of these that's being fabricated and built as we speak.
And then a ton of landscaping improvements will also hit our Steam Town area. We're very excited about that. If you see some of the tractor that Joe just mentioned, we'll have some specialty landscaping there. And then you can see some of the elements that we will be adding and some of the rides that we have in Steam Town, mainly Skywander and around Quantum Canyon Rapids. And then these are some additional elements that you'll see throughout Steam Town that we are also adding to help with the decor and the theme of that area. And so we're very, very excited because we are delivering on Steam Town from the ground up. And then this is the final overhead view of what Steam Town would look like. I know a lot of you have already seen this, but without the names for all of the facilities that we have in there. So this is the final map view of the Steam Town, which is extremely exciting for all of us and I hope you all are excited as well.
We are eagerly working to finish all of these details and we are really excited to introduce this to the world this coming June.
It's an extremely exciting time for Six Flags America. We really appreciate every single one of you for being pass holders. We appreciate you sharing your evening with us. This was an incredible experience for me, for Joe. Our entertainment team put a lot of work into putting this on for tonight. I hope you all enjoyed it. And we look forward to seeing all of you on the midway and experiencing this amazing, amazing 2024 product that we have to offer each and every single one of you. So thank you all for joining us. I hope you enjoyed the presentation and we'll see you out there. Thank you so much.